Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council member, Anacortes City Council meeting of April 15th, 2024. As it is 6:00 PM, we will now call the meeting to order. And Mr. Franciac, would you please take the role?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so we start the evening with announcements and committee reports. But first, I have something else to mention. Many of you are aware of the tragedy that happened in our community last week. This loss is heartbreaking for the people and families directly involved. Our hearts go out to you with our deepest sympathy. I'm also pretty sure that each one of us has a close family member or is potentially a person who has struggled with mental health issues. And if you or someone that you love feels unsafe in their home or can benefit from counseling or support, we do have resources in our community. You can reach out to the Anacortes Family Center. You can reach out to Community Action. You can call our fire department and get connected with our community paramedic program. We have so many compassionate caregivers in our town. In an emergency, dial 911. So hopefully, we can do what we can to prevent things like this happening in the, in the future. So, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that. So I also have announcements of some things going on this weekend, particularly for Earth Day, which is celebrated this Saturday, April 20th. We're having Spring Cleanup Day here at the city. It's from 9:00 to noon, and you can bring your residential garbage and yard waste that doesn't fit in your curbside containers to our D Avenue Operations Facility at no charge. Please bring proof of your residence. And I understand that the line gets pretty long, too, so bring your patience and maybe show up early. But good opportunity to get rid of all those old things that don't go into your curbside bins. There's also the Anacortes Earth Day Celebration, which is going to be extra special this year, this Saturday, on Commercial Avenue from Fourth to Ninth Street. And there are going to be multiple parades. But first, at 4:00, there's a street festival downtown with music at the night, live music at the Ninth Street stage, environmental displays, and children's activities. At 5:00 PM, we'll have the Procession of the Species, and you can come dressed as an endangered or extinct species or anything that you want that's nature-related. And there are no motors in this parade and no signs, no words. It's just costumes and people enjoying themselves. And then at 8:00 PM, there's the Luminary Light Parade, which will be super cool. Some of you are familiar from it, from Gwemas, where they were doing it every year, and then also Mount Vernon, they did one in January that was apparently spectacular. At 4:00 today, we had a meeting hosted here in Chambers. It was a Department of Ecology public meeting, and we'd like to thank them for, for coming to discuss the A Avenue landfill, where there is going to be increased looking at the old landfill there and if we need to further remediate the cleanup there as a city. And the meeting was here from 4:00 to about 5:15, and quite a few people showed up and had a lot of good questions to ask. And we had representatives here to help answer those questions. And public comment on that plan will be accepted through April 23rd. If you go to the Department of Ecology website and you type in "A Avenue landfill," it will take you right to where you can make your comments and kind of follow along with the process there. So that's it for my announcements. And on to committees, we have the Economic Development Committee report.
Mayor Protem Moulton.
Mr. Young.
Thank you very much. The Economic Development Committee met, and we continue to move forward with our vision for the city itself, but how do we go about collecting that data? At the meeting was Ms. Hubick, myself, of course, we've updated Mr. McDougall. He had a conflict. But we continue to move forward. The Economic Development Committee is really, one of its functions is to develop the strategic economic development plan, but a community of stakeholders will be enlisted to inform the details of this plan. And really what it's doing is going to sort of ascertain, to really get an inventory of the city's economic engines and identify the desire, future that everybody wants. And what we're doing that is in, you know, sort of siloed understandings, whether that's the hospital, which has its own unique challenges downtown with its own unique challenges, and communities, what it is that we really want. And so, you know, our goal is to collect the primary data, and from that primary data, we will do the analysis to figure out from using it, to do the secondary data push to find out how we do it. Some of the ways we may do that is surveys that may be online and may end up in some of the, you know, the things that come out to you from the city. But really, the goal is to find out what we have, what we don't have, you know, what are the retail leakages, sort of speaking of why people may want to go off-island to get things that we don't have, and/or, you know, just how do we increase what we have to make sure that life here is what we want it to be. And so whatever outcomes come of that, that SWOT analysis, I guess, is what people like to use with it, but it really does give us a data point, and it really allows us to use whatever findings that is to determine where we want to go from here. What are those things that people are needing that we don't have? And what are we looking for within our city? And it is really, will be community-driven and driven by the stakeholders, meaning all of you in those various venues. The goal, again, I know we've, there are a lot of agencies and, you know, that really do a report, but then the real question is what happens with that report? Are there actionable items? You know, how do we go about it? And so the true intent of this is to be actionable. That's one of the things that we're really focusing on. But what we want it to be clear about is, are there, first of all, common areas that could be low-hanging fruit for us as a city? And then we want to look at the things that we may need. One example could be childcare, you know, that's just one of many issues. But then there's also housing. The hospital has that issue, trying to make sure that there are places that the nurses and the doctors can stay in, even if they're here temporarily. And then when we look at everybody else, the workers that are downtown, I mean, one of the issues is they're working at any of the businesses. What about childcare? Childcare, we don't have enough. So then how do we go about getting that and changing that? Those are the different tiers in how we hope to be able to begin to address it. And so as a primary data, what we're going to do is, we've reached, we've had some very good discussions with Western Washington University, and things are progressing. And they are looking very good, and we'll announce those as we go forward. There are steps that we're looking to take to begin to address those issues. Part of it is tonight's Skagit Transit will be doing a presentation tonight, but that's part of this big comprehensive plan that we're looking for. So we're doing our due diligence, we're being deliberate about it, we're just trying to make sure that we are addressing the needs of the community and how we go about it. So again, that's really all about the primary data collection, and then we go to the secondary data, how do we use it? How do we further extrapolate? What are the issues? And then we go after those things. So anyway, just wanted to give you the update on that. Things are progressing, and, you know, I really feel good about where we are as a city of people and how we're going to go about getting it. And the stakeholders that, all stakeholders will have a chance to participate and have their voices heard. One of the things about me that you may or may not know, I hope you know, is that it really does matter to me that all voices are heard. And so what I try to do, even if we are in disagreement, is to make sure your voice is heard and that I understand what's taking place. Part of the crust of this committee is just that. What we come out with is a collection of all of us. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next on the agenda is a Finance Committee report, which I will give. We met on April 11th. It was Mr. McDougall, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and myself, and Mr. Hoagland. We also had two guests from our FCS, I forget what it stands for, but they are our consultant on various things, including our water, water management, our wholesale water management, and, and how we approach our rates and things like that. So we had two, two people from that organization, Chris Gonzalez and Tegi Aker. And then we had Mr. Dan O'Donnell join us from La Conner. He had some questions about how we, how we as a city reconcile our wholesale customer costs into the regional operating costs, which gets into the weeds immediately, so I won't, I won't, I won't go into those details. But we were told by the consultants, and we've also been assured by the state auditor each year that they've looked, that we are in compliance with what we're doing regarding our regional wholesale water rates and how those are distributed to places like the refineries and La Conner and Oak Harbor, and how those are allocated. And that was pretty much it. The 2023 reconciliation hasn't happened yet, but they're going to, they have to wait till partway through the year to do that. But anyway, that's going into the weeds, which I said I wouldn't do, but that's all I have on that. Next up is the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee report.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee meeting last Thursday, myself, Ms. Cleland McGrath, Ms. Moulton. In it, we continued our preparation for the May 9th visit from the Senate Local Government Committee. They are going to meet with our committee. They are also going to tour some of the innovative housing developments in town, including the Family Center. And then we also met to talk about the proposed Habitat Project on West Fifth Street. Obviously, we've received comments about this project at council meetings, although it hasn't been on the agenda for us to have a discussion about those comments. But in our committee, we have certainly heard and contemplated those comments, and some of those concerns are premised on incorrect information about the project, and we understand that, but we haven't had really a venue to correct that information. Certainly, we'd like to get to that point. We're not proposing to engage with some of the conspiracy theories about the United Nations and that kind of thing. But we do recognize that there are also authentic concerns about off-street parking and the alley and those kinds of things, that we think that there is a substantial conversation to be had about those, and also an education piece about the housing crisis that Anacortes and the county and the region and the nation finds itself in. We have reached out to Habitat to find out where they are in their due diligence process, and they indicate that they are at a point where they do need to know how many units they should be pursuing so that they can finish the architect's work and then eventually be able to pursue permits after they receive, if they do receive, a lease from the city of Anacortes for that parcel. We reached out to Habitat's architect to understand more about the design and the number of units that they propose. And the architect has some thoughts. They think the design would in fact be highly functional, in their opinion, because we asked about that, and we asked about the number of units. Could it be more? Could it be less? And yes, under our code, it could in fact be more. We will be touring some of Habitat's projects around the county again, because we did those tours a couple of years ago now. And we've started to catalog the multiple instances of other types of self-help housing that was constructed, that is there today in this neighborhood. Other programs, not Habitat, but other similar self-help style programs that have benefited the residents historically in this neighborhood. And then we'll be proposing some additional outreach to council for the neighborhood prior to the lease appearing before us again for decision and disposition.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Yes, Mr. Fantini.
I just had a couple of follow-ups to that. I wasn't in that meeting, but just wanted to thank the HACs Committee for their, for their work on that. Couple of things I did want to point out, though, is I think that the concerns that we have heard right here in the floor are about stormwater drainage off the alley, they're about the number of units that are proposed for that lot, it's about breaking precedent as we've never leased housing, never leased land for housing before here in Anacortes, it's about off-street parking, and while we may have had some very impassioned comments that don't necessarily reflect accurate things, I think that those concerns are very, have been very accurately conveyed. I don't think it's one or two voices that are, are leading the charge. I even see more folks out here tonight that are from that neighborhood. So I just want to make sure as we're having that discussion, and then also in regard to the number of units, that that does eventually become a full council discussion where neighbors can, can have their say before we are, we're able to vote on it. Because again, even though that is not, if a private developer owned that land, yes, it's true, they could build whatever they want without any say from, from council, but because that's not owned, it's owned by the city, we do have the opportunity to address things like stormwater drainage in the alley, number of units, all things that would still help this project to fall within the code of, of the city. I also just wanted to point out in regards to the outreach that several folks have come before here to ask for a public, a neighborhood meeting, and I think that we've been hearing those requests since probably about January of this year, and I still haven't heard any information on when a meeting like that has, has taken, is going to take place. And I think that to your education point, a meeting like that would definitely go a long way to address some of the concerns that are being presented by the neighbors. But I do think that, you know, by my count, we've received over 25, both written and spoken comments from different entities here, expressing concern for the project, and three comments in favor of the project. So I just want to make sure that as those things are happening, that we are still including the public, that we are making it a very, very public discussion, because that is city-owned land.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
And yes, we're aware of each of those concerns. Each of those should be addressed, right? The question before us is what forum, what format? Because it hasn't been added to the agenda. Staff have not put it on the agenda, the mayor has not put it on the agenda. Any two or three council members can put anything on the agenda, and eventually we will get to that point, because otherwise, I don't think it's going to happen. We are, we do not, as council members, as policymakers, schedule neighborhood meetings. We rely on staff and the mayor to do that, and that hasn't happened so far. So there, there is somebody responsible for that, and it's, it's certainly not us.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. Just to follow up a little bit, you know, the, just to address a couple of things, I think we're all inclined, as at least as a committee, we've discussed the importance of having a neighborhood meeting, being onsite, and, and discussing it with those, the folks that are nearby, and will be directly impacted, absolutely, and obviously, anyone else who would like to. So our goal is to, and I think Mr. Walter has alluded to that, to have that, some type of neighborhood meeting before it comes back in front of council, so that not only folks are able to have, get comments out and be onsite, but also so that we can hear comments and concerns there, too. The number of units, I think, has been addressed. Off-street parking, I think there's been some confusion about whether it's six lot units, six parking spots or eight parking spots. It's eight parking stop spots off-street is the design, and then you also have parallel parking up front. I've heard a couple of times the reference about concerns for water runoff or drainage. There will be no accommodations made by the planning department or the building department because it's Habitat. They will have to follow all of the development regulations on the books that any other development would require, and that includes any kind of stormwater issues or runoff or alleyway improvements or whatnot. So I think that there's a lot of information that clearly has not been conveyed, and I apologize for that, but also I would say that, yes, we need to have a meeting. We are part-time council members, and I think that there's a lot to get out, to share about the historical nature. You know, less than 400 feet away from this parcel, there are 10 Skagit self-help homes that were built in the 90s. They are now on the open market. Those homes, most recently, had sold for over $400,000. Their self-help homes next, near me, just down the street, Dow Jones Way was historically self-help. Those homes are now in the $600,000. So the reason for wanting to do a new, kind of have a new design or mechanism with the lease component versus selling the property or, or giving it, or somehow conveying it to the individual homeowners, is that there is a mechanism then to keep it permanently affordable, and when, when a current homeowner moves out and leaves, there is, it can then go to the next kind of family that would qualify or individual. So I think there's a lot for us to talk about. I think it would make sense for us to be out in the neighborhood. I've walked that neighborhood. I'm happy to walk the neighborhood again with, with the community. But as Mr. Walter says, you know, this is, there's staff, and there's also a mayor who can plan this deal for us. So, thank you.
So we look forward to having that meeting and being onsite and addressing some of these concerns and getting the information out there that is accurate and correct, and we'll go from there. So thank you for that, and we'll move on to this Skagit County Law and Justice Council report.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
So the, the Skagit County Law and Justice Council met on Tuesday, April 9th, over at the Sheriff's Office Training Room. Again, this is a group that's made up of representatives from various different organizations, police departments, and, and city councils. We got a very informative presentation from a Jasmine Sandoval and Seth Peebles, who's with Pioneer Human Services and Skagit Detox. So this is a building that is over in Skagit County that has about 16 beds at it, and they serve those folks who find themselves in need of detox. And people get there by being referred either from social workers, law enforcement agencies, and you know, they, they said they can even serve anybody that just walks up to the door looking for, for treatment, which is great, because certainly, we have a lot of issues nationwide when it comes to substance abuse problems. That while it is a Skagit County entity, they do find that they serve folks outside of Skagit County, which is why they do have a number of beds that are reserved specifically for Skagit County residents and always available for Skagit County residents. One of the things, it was really informative, how many, how many patients they see. One of the, the things that I found to be really disheartening, and no fault of theirs, is that none of this is available to potential clients under the age of 18. So, and it was quite a surprise to, I think, many people in the room, because you think of, you know, substance abuse starts at a, tends to start, anyway, at a very young age. And so to be able to address that at, at a young age, you would think is key, but they only serve 18 and up. And I did ask for some clarification on that, and I'm supposed to hear back a little bit more on why that is. I'm sure it's probably for a good reason, but I've, myself, along with several other people in, in the room, found that to be just kind of a little disheartening. So I hope that as we move forward with the, the Skagit County Law and Justice Council with these meetings, which have been very informative, that we'll also look to maybe some solutions for coming up with some potential options for, for folks that are under the age of 18 that, that need this, this help as well. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to the Port City Liaison Committee report.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So on April 10th, we had our joint Port City Liaison meetings. Mayor Miller was there, I was there, council member TJ Fantini was there, along with staff and port, port folks, and both Commissioner Petrich and Commissioner Pittis. We talked a little bit about the event center. I guess Senator Cantwell and her staff toured the location with Mayor Miller and asked for possible federal appropriations for, for the center. It's a long shot, but still worth, worth asking. Later this month, we will start to have meetings about the next steps with the consultants about design work that is going to be completed in 10 weeks. The wastewater treatment outfall has been signed, and so they were going to complete the access agreement for, with the port and the contractor shortly, and then the contractor would coordinate, because they're going to do some staging on port property. So we appreciate the fact that they're able to work with us on that project. Public Works was able to share a little bit. We're working on the, obviously, the capital facilities plan is our big project for this next year, couple of years, and making sure that the ports involved with any major projects that we both want to either combine forces on or be at least aware of. And then we talked a little bit, the port has officially moved to the Anacortes Professional Center, where their staff, their offices are now. They are in the process of reviewing applications for the executive director position. There was quite a bit of interest, and there's a lot of vetting to do, and interviews will be handled first, second week of May. And then we talked a little bit about just kind of comprehensive plan updates. Just as a point of interest, the Altair Americas Memorial Park is going to have some improvements done to it. So if you notice any changes, I think it's going to be done later this summer, fall. Most of the families have been contacted, but I know that's a really important memorial, memorial for our community, and so we just want everyone to know that it's going to be improved, but obviously, stay intact. And then finally, one positive note was there, historically, there's been a little bit of a lag between port and city communication when it comes to major storm events and things like that. So we were happy to hear that port staff, specifically the environmental specialist, Kevin Anderson, is now working directly with the sewer department when anything comes up. So it's just a positive note to end on, that we are continuing to see good communication with our two entities.
Thank you very much for that. So I did not mention earlier that originally, we had scheduled an executive session for tonight for half an hour, but that has been pulled from the agenda to be rescheduled next week, that because the materials for council were not provided in time for us to review them, so that will be coming back, and, and that wasn't our staff's fault. But that, that executive session will actually happen next week instead of tonight. So moving on, we will...
Madam Mayor Protem.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fantini.
I have one other thing I want to add. On Friday evening, this past Friday evening, myself, not together, myself, Council Member Young, Council Member Walters, Council Member Cleland McGrath, and Council Member Hubick all attended the first annual firefighter awards that has happened in 25 years. This is something that we used to do here in Anacortes quite frequently, but this was the first time in 25 years that this had happened. And I, it was a very moving ceremony from beginning to end, whether it was the bagpipers coming in, playing in our new recruits, thanks to the Levy Lid Lift that were all sworn in and pinned, as they call it, with their, their badge that night. Also, they gave out awards for service for all the firefighters, length of service. There was also some community awards. There were two gentlemen that had performed an initial rescue, and I believe it was Whistle Lake, who also received a community award for what they had done. And then also, I just wanted to point out, there were three special awards that were given. One was for Fire Officer of the Year, and that went to Chris Byer. Another was for the Chief's Special Award of Merit, which went to Sharon Shaw. And another was the Firefighter of the Year, and that went to...
And another was the Firefighter of the Year, and that went to Tristan Lucas. And I would just say, all in all, it was a great event to have, and I look forward to attending again next year.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Any events or any reports? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. We are moving on to public comments, and I have three people signed up this evening, all to talk about habitats on Fifth Street. And the first person is Patricia Dever. Come on up to the, thank you, come on up to the podium, and then you can state your name, and the city that you live in, and you will have three minutes to let us know how you feel. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Devers, you can pull down the microphone, and also, there's a button on the base that if you press, it should turn green.
Okay.
And get a little closer, thanks.
Patricia Dever, and I live up on West Third Street, close to where the new housing places are supposed to come.
I'm so sorry, but could you get a little bit closer? Thank you, because it's mainly for the people at home.
I live very close to where the Habitat houses will come, and one of the things that I was told was that that area was going to be designated as a park, and our children and grandchildren have to play in the streets, and we get really concerned about them, especially because there's an awful lot of traffic right in that area. And so we think that it might not be the perfect place to put that. That's it.
Thank you. Next up, I have Debbie Cole. Come on up.
Sorry. Debbie Cole.
And do you live in-
I live here.
Thank you.
I'm Patty's neighbor, and this is another neighbor that the sheet was gone, so he came here specifically to talk, Tom Sweeney.
Well, we will not, we will absolutely let him speak.
Okay, good, thank you. So I wanted to say again, thank you for letting us speak, and I am opposed, as I have been since the last time that I came up to speak. Tonight, I heard you mention the parking, that there were six parking spaces for, what? Eight parking spaces for five houses, which to me, there are going to be at least 10. And what I wanted to let you know is, I walk that street several times a day, and all the parallel parking, when I've walked there, is taken already. So if you're expecting that the parallel parking would be available for excess, it's not, it's not going to be available. And then lastly, who would be organizing this neighborhood meeting? Any idea, so that we can have an idea of when we can meet and be heard, and, thank you.
And actually, I'm sorry, sir, I'm going to have, is Kelly List here? Okay, so are you okay if this gentleman goes before you, since he's already there? Okay, all right, well, you'll be next. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. My name's Tom Sweeney, and I live on West Third, which is just around the corner. I've had a number of things that I heard tonight that I'd like to discuss. One is this runoff water. I don't know if you've been there, I've lived there for 14 years, it's not runoff water. That is a little stream that runs out in front of there. That runs year-round. I walk by there all the time, going up into the woods, with my dogs, and it runs all the time. It's not runoff water. I don't know if it comes from springs, or where it comes, but it doesn't dry up. Another thing is, you were talking about the self-help homes, and I'd just like to ask, are they on, do you have them on, five of them on one lot in your neighborhood? You have self-help homes that we've had before on one lot, not five on one, you know? I mean, that's what we're getting at. It's not, if you came in there and put two homes in, I don't think anybody would say anything, but you're putting five homes, or six? It's just crazy. And I was just wondering one more thing. Have you, have they done any environmental impact with five homes on one or two lots instead of one home? I think if you were any private contractor, you'd have to end up doing it. And thank you, and yeah, I definitely oppose it. I think there's a lot of places in this city you could put five homes on without, in the middle of a little neighborhood like that, and there is no off, parking along the road on that backside. Even West Third, if you go up West Third, West Third is a wide street, and the people that we have parked on that right now, we have problems with. We put signs up all over to slow down because of the kids, like she was saying. We also got the city to put up a 25 flashing light, and the police department to come and patrol it once in a while on West Third. And that's just going on there, and that's what we have right now. So yes, I do oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. List, would you like to come on up?
Kelly List, Anacortes, regarding the West Fifth Street build. I'd like to start with two quotes from Councilman Walters' last mayoral candidacy. Quote, "Communicating well with the public is important, and government should be upfront about what it's doing, and it shouldn't try to hide bad news." Well, the neighbors have received no official communication from the town regarding this proposed bill. It has been strictly word of mouth to inform the neighbors of the significant change to the neighborhood, so we're kind of disappointed. Quote two, "We need to both build housing that is market rate and support subsidized providers like Family Center and Housing Authority. And while we're doing that, we need to protect the quality of our neighborhoods and the uniqueness of our small-town charm." Dear City Council, I'm really trying to wrap my head around the proposed West Fifth Street build of five 1,200-square-foot, two-story homes with no driveways, no garages, on a lot, that Skagit County still thinks will hold only two homes. The density of this project actually is creating a community within the community. Neighbors who expected to have one home built next to them will now have five. What is this community going to look like in the real world, beyond the beautiful architectural Will this fall under the Housing Authority's management? What will keep five disparate outbuildings from being constructed on the lot? What about fences to hold the dogs of five families? Where do tradespeople park their work truck? Because those parking spots look kind of small. Where does their trailer go? Where do they store their tools? I wonder, how many members of City Council have to scrounge for a parking spot when they arrive from home after a long day's work? Please reconsider this plan and go back to the drawing board and propose something that protects the quality of our neighborhoods and the uniqueness of our small-town charm. Last note, we've been coming week after week to share our concerns and displeasure with this build, and I am more than a little disturbed to hear that someone on this City Council considers our concerns ridiculous. This might be just another agenda item for you, where you can check a checkbox, but we're losing sleep over it, folks. And I hope that the rest of the council will hear our voices. I wasn't going to bring up the historic builds in our neighborhood, but like the other gentleman said, there was just one house per lot. It's manageable. If things go a little south, it's manageable. At the end of my street was one of these builds, and I was not going to mention this. There are 12 vehicles, 12, parked on that single lot, 12. It hasn't changed in the six years I've been on that street. It's, luckily, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Thank you, Ms. List.
Time?
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the live audience that would like to speak? I see there are a couple. How about if we start with Mr. O'Donnell? Would you want to step on up and give us your full name and the city in which you reside, please?
My name is Dan O'Donnell, 328 North Third in La Conner. I attended your Finance Committee meeting, and I appreciate your remarks, Ms. Walton. Unfortunately, I was disappointed. The Finance Director failed to mention the- I'm not going away, folks.
Okay, well, that's good. And if you would like to come back up in a little bit, too, we can certainly accommodate you. Thank you. Thank you for coming to our Finance Committee meeting as well. Okay, so I did see a couple hands. How about you in the front row? The front occupied row on that side.
My name is John Lewis. I'm an Anacortes resident, I've lived here since 2002, and I am, in fact, a neighbor in the West Fifth Street. I live right next door to that lot, 3706 West Fifth Street. A couple of comments. I don't have a lot of respect for the NIMBY attitude, and I know there's a need for, not in my backyard, I know there's a need for affordable housing in Anacortes. In fact, I was exposed to that for quite a while, as I worked for, I used to run a soup kitchen here, Dinner at the Brick, for about six years, and have a pretty good feel for what the economy is like here, and what, how difficult it can be to live here. With that, I disapprove of the project as it currently stands. I think there's a need to reconsider the scope on that housing for a number of reasons. That kind of density in that small of an area, when I first bought that house, it was originally slated to be a city park, and that apparently has changed over the course of the years. And Mr. Walters had mentioned a number of constituents that were informed of that, or involved in the process, but I don't recall ever being contacted at any time in the subsequent years to get my thoughts on that. And also, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and some of the neighbors pointed out, those valuable single-family units that were Skagit self-help are just that, single-family units, that is one house per lot. Now, it's a pretty big lot, looks like it's maybe a little over a quarter of an acre, but to put five houses on that, two-story houses, and there is absolutely, reiterating, no parking available for that, you cannot put that many cars there. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I see Ms. Mu in the background. Come on up. Thank you.
Shiuan Mu, I live in Anacortes. I walk on West Fifth, West Fourth every day with my dog, and I run into a older gentleman, he's on the electric scooter with a little dog, and another lady with him, oftentimes, actually, sometimes two, were using walker, and they move very, very slow. And I see cars parked constantly on both sides of the street. On weekend, with visitors, both streets are full, so parallel parking or street parking is very limited. I can't imagine where you have your construction trucks there. And also, recently, in the past two weeks, at Tursey Park, my dog likes to greet neighbors and say hi to kids. So we go see the kids, and then I ask the young families, I said, hey, there are some really nice little cottages they're going to be building there. Would you like something like that? Seven out of seven told me the design, I showed the floor layout, it's just the footprints from the PDF file we got from Mr. Walters. They said, that's not designed for family, because they need backyards or a front yard for the kids to play, and they don't have storage for the kids' toys and the lawn mower or anything, and think about the trash cans outside. If you've ever been to the neighborhoods, on a windy day, Friday in Skyline, or Wednesday in our area, just look at the trash cans, the lid got blown off, and the trash all over the place. Just think about, all the cans will be outdoors all time, it will be a lot worse with the garbage in the streets. I recently also have a neighbor, and she is in her late 80s, and she is helping her friend to move out of Chandler's house, Chandler Square, and that place, one room, one meal, is now running $4,600. I hate to see an older lady, paid her taxes, excellent citizen, supported the senior centers, and supported Meals on Wheels and the food bank, now couldn't afford to be in assisted living. And she just moved out to an apartment. I asked her, I said, well, have you heard about this cottage housing? Maybe you can go ask about the availability of those houses? She said, those are not for people like me, those are for nurses, teachers, firemen, and EMT, and the police officers. I said, how do you know? She said, well, because I go somehow heard about that. And recently, she fell and hurt herself, that's very sad. I am also in process helping a friend who is on long-term disability, moving to Seattle, Section 8 apartment. She's been waiting in Anacortes for almost two years, no availability, but luckily, there's one available in downtown Seattle, so we're just moving a few furniture, a few pieces at a time. So the bottom line is, affordable housing has three distinctive market segments. One is burdened families who couldn't, have a hard time to keep up the mortgage payment, looks like the cottages, the duplex and the condos you're looking for. The other are complete homeless, that really have to depend on the family centers. And then there's another section, it's for the Section 8 apartments. So we would like to see how the City Council package in a comprehensive manner, how you're going to address this affordable housing segment.
Thank you, Ms. Mu.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Anyone else here in person that would like to make a public comment? Seeing no hands, I will look, oh, whoops, I'm sorry. There you are, come on up.
I moved back here a year and a half ago from time I spent in Mount Vernon. Making things too handy and too good brings more. Anacortes has done beautiful with guidelines, and I want to compliment you, but just remember, the more we give housing, the more expected. When the street of R Avenue and S Avenue got cleared of the mobile homes that were starting to be there badly last year, the residents on that area were very pleased on the work that the city did in helping. Anacortes has got a lot to be thankful for, to work for, and I see that happening, that you're all working in the right idea for you and for all of us. I appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to again express, like I did back in January, in case there's anyone from Habitat for Humanity watching. Yes, the mayor can certainly help with putting together a neighborhood meeting, but I am also more than willing to speak with Habitat for Humanity and offer my help as a member of that neighborhood to put that meeting together. And I do also think that it is not just the sole responsibility of the mayor to do this. I actually feel it is a responsibility of Habitat for Humanity to work that process and put that together. But again, you know, maybe I'm totally wrong and not reading a bylaw correctly, but that's just what my heart says. If you're passionate about something and you want that to happen, then you should do everything in your power to make sure you can get as many people behind it. So, you know, I believe that the Habitat project is a project that can be done within the correct parameters. So, I am more than willing and happy to meet with Habitat, help bring the neighbors together, whatever I can do to help move that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fantini. Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fantini, and thank you for the public comments. I appreciate it. And hearing that there's already speeding issues and parking issues are important for us to be aware of. So, we appreciate you guys all coming. I think that there's two kind of issues that we need to have further discussion on, and I've heard from both council members and the public. One is this parcel which has been designated as a park. If that's the right thing, to switch it from being a park to something else. If Habitat is the right partner, if it's no longer going to be a park. And I think that's a discussion that has been... We had been approached by Habitat a number of years ago. I think it was 2020, 2021-ish. But it took a while to kind of figure out what's possible and what their board and their director wanted and what we actually had as options, right? So, when we finally came, brought it to council, or Habitat did, they proposed, had this proposal. I think the other component is, do we want to use this site for some kind of Habitat project or housing project like that? And then also, what is the site able to have density-wise, right? Regardless of whose project it is, what is feasible and allowed under current code? And I think that that's a different discussion to have because we've spent a lot of time working on this since 2019, doing development regulation updates, and this has been on the books for a number of years. Unfortunately, clearly, we have not conveyed it to enough people, but this is not anything that's different. So, finally, the three... The comments about financially burdened families, homeless, or Section 8 apartments. The least that was at least initially presented was identifying under 80% AMI or less. Area median income is determined by HUD, and currently, for this year, for Anacortes and Mount Vernon, it's $103,000 for a family of four. We said, "Let's keep it under 80 and make it someone that's... Families would be eligible if they have lived or worked or have students in the school system." The area median income for a family of four at 50% AMI is $50,000. So, when we're talking about who would be eligible for this type of housing through Habitat, it would require them to do a bit of work. A family of four making $50,000, a family of three with one parent and two kids is making about $45,000. That's $24 an hour. I mean, that is your typical para-pro in our school district. That is your typical full-time preschool teacher. That is a number of jobs at the hospital. So, these are individuals who would qualify, who are productive members of our community, who are purchasing their home. They may not own the land, but they would own the home and have a mortgage with an actual bank outside of Habitat, with additional responsibilities of volunteer hours required to build the home, classes, and a process for if and when they phase out and are able to go to open market, that that house would then be qualified for another. So, I think that the other thing that I think is important, we can talk about further at our neighborhood meeting, is these neighborhoods, these developments exist throughout our county. We just haven't had them here because we don't have enough land. So, density is the direction we're going. And one of the questions was about condition and whether they're renters or whatnot. They typically put in CCNRs that require all shared open space to be landscaped and maintained by an outside entity, and they pay a small fee for that. I just, I think it's important for us to continue to answer questions. This is a conversation to have, and I think it's... You all deserve answers to some of your questions that you're asking, and this is our attempt at trying to answer off the cuff. So, we appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Cleland McGrath. One of the things that you alluded to is the park. That's come up quite a few times, and we do have another... The city does have another parcel out in that neighborhood that we have discussed turning into a park and making that a park to make up for that, the one, because we have the two parcels. So, that's in conversations. Eight spaces for five homes, I don't think is a crazy low amount of parking on-site for people. I mean, I don't know how many... I don't know how many cars everybody has, but some people actually do ride bikes. Some people don't mind walking a block to their house when they park. A lot of people, you know, don't mind if they can't park directly in front of their house. So, I think that's a reasonable amount. Also, as far as any of the water questions... Sorry, I'm laughing. Someone's laughing. So, as far as any kind of environmental regulations or code or water, that is all going to be taken... That will all be subject to permit and review by the planning department. So, as Mr. Walters said, that doesn't just get granted because it's a Habitat project. They need to go through all the requirements that any other developer would need to. So, those are just a few things. Garbage cans blowing over, garbage cans blow over in all kinds of neighborhoods, including my own. So, I mean, again, we haven't given you all of the answers, but we intend to do the best we can with a neighborhood meeting, and we have... We can notify homeowners within a certain radius and let them know, as we do with certain permits, permit applications. So, that's one way we would go about that. So, that's what I have to say for the moment. Does anyone else... Would anyone else like to chime in from the dais?
Madam Mayor, Protem.
Walters.
I would just like to respond directly to some of this criticism that I have received. I guess because I am the one that has, in fact, written emails back in long form to try to explain the project. I do think that communicating well with the public is important, and that's why at the beginning of one of the first emails that I wrote to the neighborhood in response to questions that we'd received was, "I apologize on behalf of the city for the failure of the city as an institution to effectively communicate with the public about the project to the extent that we really should have prior to..." Well, we haven't actually done anything yet. We haven't executed a lease. We haven't taken any action that is binding upon the city to proceed with the project at this point. I know that you've gotten some of these emails because you've cited them week after week as you've appeared before us, and a couple of times now, some of those comments that I have made have been mischaracterized for reasons unknown. But some of them, even in this meeting, for example, you didn't hear anyone up here say that the concerns of the neighborhood are ridiculous. And in fact, I set off this meeting by saying, "There are authentic concerns from the neighborhood that we need to address." And we have committed to addressing those concerns. You may not like all of the answers at the end of the day, but we're not there yet either. So, there will be a process. We have to figure it out. We have to figure out what that process looks like, and then we have to engage in it. But in the meantime, I would appreciate just a couple of you from refraining from mischaracterizing the comments that we've made, the project, the project's parameters, the number of parking spaces, and those kinds of things. Because it is important that we deal with this issue on the facts. It is also important that we deal with the larger issue of housing. There are people in this community who work here, who live here, that every day are in danger of losing their housing. They endanger our ability to live here because if we can't get people to work in our restaurants, to work at our hospital, to work in our shops downtown, we have a problem with the ecosystem of housing in Anacortes. We have to deal with that effectively. We don't need to say that this project has to happen to deal with that issue. This reserving judgment on this particular project. But at the same time, we need to engage with the underlying issue, and we need to find solutions for housing across the board. We have a Housing Action Plan. We have a comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan gets updated in the next two years. We have a lot of work to do to figure out these issues. They are serious, and they affect our ability to live here. So, let us reset this discussion. Let us figure out a way for us to engage with the neighborhood on this project in whatever shape it might end up looking like. And let's have an interactive conversation where we can get to the facts and hear the real concerns of the neighborhood so that they can either be mitigated or otherwise addressed, or the project can be modified. But we haven't been doing that in the last couple of weeks. We, the City Council, hasn't. The neighborhood hasn't as well, and so we need to reset and get to a better place here. And there is a possibility that we can do that. This community has done it before.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Mr. Wetcher, would you like to come up and make a comment?
I don't think I'll touch that again. A question for the council. How does Habitat go about deciding where they would like to center Habitat development within the community? And are the council members aware of the property ownership that Habitat already has in several large parcels throughout the city? One in particular that's undeveloped off of the cul-de-sac of 18th. I just wonder... I might be a little late to this discussion tonight, but I was just wondering if this is a problem project. How does Habitat go about deciding that this is a good site or a bad site? Is it funding or just opportunity? Because I do see undeveloped land that Habitat actually owns that would be very reasonable for multiple-unit dwellings on a nice, quiet street that could be very affordable housing. So, I just suggest that there's a lot of opportunities there that do include property that Habitat already owns, and that's why I wonder how they prioritize their development of certain lots or areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetcher.
Madam Mayor, Protem.
Yes, Ms. Wetcher.
Just to answer that really quickly. First of all, how does Habitat determine where it pursues housing in the community? I don't know generally, but I think, if I recall correctly with respect to this project, it was at the invitation of our former planning director to come and talk to us about this parcel. Second, are we aware of other parcels that Habitat owns that they could be pursuing for development in Anacortes? I am only aware of one other one that Habitat has identified that they have also conveyed is not ready for development because they don't have effective access to the parcel. So, I'm not sure that there are really other options, but certainly, we can inquire with them again.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Okay, so, thank you, everyone, for your comments. We will move on now to the consent agenda. Oh, except for we have one thing before that. Our Finance Director, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Ms. Molton. My issue is in regards to one of the items on the consent agenda. There was an invoice that came up very late in the cycle. Our packet had already been printed, so I was going to request that the voucher list be pulled from the consent agenda so I can discuss the issue with council further. If that sounds reasonable to the council.
Yes. Is that something that I do, or does council make a motion for that?
I have a motion that we...
Oh, Mr. Walters?
Any council member can just pull an item from the consent agenda, so I'd pull 5B.
Okay, thank you. And so, currently then, we have 5A on the consent agenda. Protem.
Yep.
Ms. Hubick.
I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 5A from Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Young. And this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Hoagland.
Very good. Thank you so much. So, late last week, it was Friday, came to the attention, my attention in Finance, that there was an invoice that had come payable. That invoice had been out there for some time, and it's related to... Well, the vendor is Cogent, and Cogent is where the city fiber department gets its upstream fiber access. They were supposed to start providing service, I believe, in September. They didn't actually start until October. The invoice that we received had that start date all the way back to September. So, Mr. Lenberg has been objecting to and negotiating with Cogent all this time. They finally reached an agreement on Friday, and he... I saw the email this morning asking about getting that payment done. We verified they would not take a credit card payment. So, in order to... They requested payment by this Friday to avoid additional fees and potentially disrupting service. In order to get it paid by this Friday, we would need council to approve this invoice. So, what I'm requesting is that council approve adding the invoice from Cogent in the amount of $18,132.18. We would then, if council approves, we would add that to the existing voucher list and then process payment tomorrow with the rest of the expenditures.
Madam Mayor, Protem.
Mr. Walters.
I move we approve the claims as presented with the addition of the $18,132.18 Cogent invoice.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the invoice presented by Mr. Hoagland. Mr. Franciac... Do... Oh, I can do a voice vote, right? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. Okay, moving on to other business. We have some guests tonight from Skagit Transit who have been making the rounds around the county, letting us know what's happening there, and they have a great presentation for us tonight. And setting up at the podium is Ms. Crystal Stidham. She's the CEO of Skagit Transit. She's been in that role for over, for just over a year. She has a very robust career spanning more than 27 years in public transportation and brings a wealth of experience and a deep commitment to enhancing community mobility. She resides in Anacortes, and she's a passionate advocate for sustainable and equitable public transit solutions, delivering safe and reliable transportation services to foster community growth and ensure accessible opportunities for all. Under her guidance, Skagit Transit continues to innovate as a key player in local infrastructure, actively promoting green transportation initiatives to create a more connected and environmentally responsible future. And they're working right now on their long-range transit plan with improvements to be made, particularly with some ideas for Anacortes. Ms. Stidham will talk about... Ms. Stidham will talk about micro-mobility and some other things.
We're having technical difficulties.
Okay.
Well, when I say we, I mean I.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me here this evening, Cheryl, and I really appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to come and talk to you about the long-range transit plan that we're doing. And it's not working. Okay, I'll use the mouse. Good evening again. My name is Crystal Stidham, as Ms. Moulton said, and I am the CEO for Skagit Transit. I'm here this evening to talk to you about our long-range transit plan. One of the key performance indicators that we use in public transportation is ridership, and this conversation comes up often with my colleagues in the industry across the U.S. Many transportation agencies have fully recovered since the pandemic. Some are still struggling. Our fixed ridership still hasn't fully recovered. We're still down about 35%. We know that COVID has changed the workplace, but when we measure our performance against other agencies, we have to ask ourselves why our ridership is still so low. And the answer is simple. Whether it be earlier service, later service, more frequent service, or service to new areas, we need to do better. This is why shortly after coming to Skagit Transit, I knew that we needed to take a comprehensive look at our service, and we've hired a consultant to conduct this study. This evening we will be discussing our long-range transit plan overview, our community outreach and online activities, and ways to get involved. Whether we like it or not, as we've talked about this evening, Skagit County is growing and Anacortes is growing. My primary goal in giving this presentation this evening is to garner community engagement and encourage our leaders to embrace public transportation through transit-oriented development. Some of the benefits of public transportation are reduced traffic congestion and air pollution, supporting green initiatives through zero emissions vehicles, reducing single occupancy trips, reducing vehicle miles traveled, building thriving communities, job creation, increased mobility, allowing people to age in their homes, and providing equal access to vital resources. And that should have been slide number two, sorry. Fixed route service. We have 19 routes, approximately 23 service, in service daily. In 2023, we provided over 450,000 rides for people in our community. We have a total of seven park-it rides, park-and-rides, some of which we own, some are owned by their respective cities or states, one is privately owned. Our primary private, our primary transit centers and park-and-ride facilities are South Mount Vernon, Marches Point, Alger, and Skagit Station. The 40, 80, and 90X operate in partnership with Island Transit and Wacom Transit Authority. Regional connections include the Route 40X with Skylet, with Island Transit's 411 at Marches Park-and-Ride. Route 80 serves Wash, Western Washington Union in Bellingham. Route 90 serves East Everett Station, which is a regional transit hub including connections to Amtrak, Community Transit, Everett Transit, Greyhound Bus Service, and Sounder Rail. Our paratransit service is aligned with our fixed route service in terms of service area and the dates and times of operation. As part of this project, Skagit Transit is looking at how we can build on our regional partnerships with Island Transit and WTA Wacom Transit Authority to provide cross-country service, cross-county, rather, service in addition to improving our local routes. Service changes for the last five years have been guided by our 2018 Strategic Plan with annual adjustments made through our Transit Development Plan every year. The 2018 Strategic Plan has guided our overall investment. We update our TDP, Transit Development Plan, annually, and we'll be working on that soon as it's due by, to this date by September 1st. I think I got ahead of myself here, yeah. Slide four. This is a map of our existing fixed route bus system. This shows our routes. The legend on the bottom, if you can read it, it's kind of small, shows the weekday frequency and the number of riders that we had for 2023. The Skagit Transit Long Range Transit Plan will build on that 2018 Strategic Plan by doing a few things. First, a comprehensive operational analysis that looks at existing local operations and sees where there could be some adjustments. Second, a regional transit study that looks at how we make connections throughout the county and connecting into Island, Wacom, San Juan, and Snohomish Counties with a particular focus on service opportunities with WTA and Island Transit. Third, a micro-transit study that looks at how alternative service models could be deployed in our region. As part of, all of this will be supported by countywide engagement. Through this process, we will understand the opportunities and challenges of the rider experience and recommend service improvements accordingly. Our consultant will recommend service changes. It should be noted that this study is being paid for by grants, partnerships with Islands and Wacom Transit, and some local funds. Each of these elements I just outlined will come together to make service recommendations and investments for the next five to 10 years and will be our long-range transit plan. Periodically, such evaluations are helpful to attract new riders and better serve existing riders. And Skagit County will continue to see a lot of changes. The last few years have rapidly changed the transportation patterns, especially for transit agencies. People are taking different trips at different times of the day and for different purposes, and we need to reanalyze trip patterns for our stakeholders. Skagit County has grown in population by about 10% in the last decade and has seen job growth as well. Skagit County is starting an update to the Comprehensive Plan, their Comprehensive Plan. There are also upcoming regional changes to transportation that will continue to provide opportunities. Community Transit's Orange Line BRT opening in Linwood on March 30th, 2024 will provide east-west connectivity in Snohomish County. The Linwood Link Extension will provide light rail into Snohomish County later this year. And Sound Transit is planning for the Everett Link Light Rail Extension, will extend light rail service from Linwood to Everett. Currently, that is slated to open in about 10 to 15 years. This is an opportunity for us to be proactive in thinking about the future of Skagit County and our connections to our neighbors. As we look to the future of transit service, we'll also look at ways to add additional operating models to our traditional fixed route service and paratransit. As part of this effort, Skagit Transit will study two target areas for micro-transit service. One is here on Fidalgo Island, and the other is northwest Skagit County, which is north of Highway 20 and west of I-5. Within these zones, the study will develop service recommendations for a micro-transit fare structure, service riders with mobility devices, booking interfaces, and possibly working with a micro-transit provider. Starting with these two service areas will help us identify how micro-transit could be a part of our operating model moving forward. I'm on the right slide now. As you can see from this slide, we have already conducted a number of community outreach meetings. Two that are not showing on this slide is the one that we did on Gwemas Island and the one we conducted in March for government agencies and nonprofit organizations. Some of the council members, actually, I think Ms. Moulton, you were the only one that attended that one. Mr. Young, you attended one of the other ones that we had in, in Anacortes. While we have concluded our official outreach, it is not too late to provide, provide feedback or be partners with us as we grow our service. We have a stack of flyers in the back that have QR codes that will take you to our online survey where you can participate in our survey. We're gathering existing data to include studies already completed by some of our partners, to include the county and SCOG, and beginning the process to look at both short-term and long-term opportunities. Stay tuned for more information on Skagit Transit's Long Range Transit Plan, including Phase 2 of engagement that will occur in the fall of 2024. And I'm happy to take questions if anybody has any.
Madam Mayor, perotam?
Mr. Young?
Thank you very much. First of all, you know, Ms., I want to thank you and Skagit Transit for really the hard work you, of coming to communities and trying to communicate the opportunity that's here because it's truly an opportunity. I'm also very thankful for having had the benefit, of course, of working with Ms. Willis early on, who convinced me of just so much of the merits of who we are, what we are, what the opportunities are. And then also, you know, to her credit, she often spoke about you and the work that was to come and how the opportunity to bring about this renaissance, which is my word, about how do we connect with transit and how that opportunity to participate is really before us. And that's really what you're trying to get us to do, to realize that although, you know, we've got big buses, but our view of transportation here on Fidalgo in, in the minds of many people, really, if we reevaluate it, it really is such a wonderful tool for all of us, ADA. So many people can have access to it. And imagine having communities, Skyline, Old Town, or even my neighborhood or others, that with the micro-transit, it gives us greater accessibility, which is really a wonderful thing. And when we talk about carbon emissions, when we talk about transportation, when we talk about traffic, all those things that you wonderfully mentioned in the presentation are true. We have an opportunity right now to participate and help shape what that will be, our vision forward. And, you know, for me, as I was just loving the idea, you know, it really made me realize that, you know, sometimes I can just come out and catch the transit and be downtown, have a wonderful dinner, maybe a couple of spirits. And also, you know, given the development of our city and the other parts that are developing, it also allows me to be able to use transportation to go there too and then come home. Imagine that. And so in anticipation of this meeting, I reached out to some friends that, you know, they go between the islands. They own a home on Lopez and some others on Orchids, Orcas. And, you know, part of that, they said if they could just be able to walk on from there and have transportation pick them up and they can go through downtown Anacortes and, you know, any of the other places, it would be absolutely something that they can do. And so really, my comment is really, I've had people bend my ear about, of course, Sunday, Sunday bus service, but every single person I've spoken with have been just very much enthused by it. And the more we continue to reach out in community and educate them about the opportunity that it means and the true benefit that it will be for our community and all of us, that we have a voice and a chance now to participate. So really, honestly, I want to thank you for you and Ms. Willis for coming and presenting to this council. It is something that I think our community can benefit from. And so if there's anything we can do to help get the information out, and for those of you that are, you mentioned the QR code that's in back. It's a great way to have your comments to put in because part of this is what's going to go to the consultant that's going to compile all of that. And then, you know, as the process goes forward. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing. And if you're out there listening, get that QR code and have your opinion heard if you're not going to be at any of the others. Thank you.
And for the folks that are online, I'm not sure if we have anybody, but it is on our website as well, skagittransit.com. They can do the, is it a QR code? They can go directly to the, the web, the survey? It's on our website. It's the front page when you...
So this is an item on the agenda that the public is welcome to comment on, as well as anyone in the audience interested in asking a question or commenting on what they've heard or any, any questions they have about transit? Sure, come on up. And the usual, state your name and your city, please.
Barbara Smart from Anacortes. Are you doing a big outreach to the high schools? Because if you can get the school kids to take transit, then when they're older, they'll still take transit. But trying to, no, trying to get a lot of seniors who haven't taken the bus around all these other strange people, it, it can be a little difficult. But the Anacortes Paratransit, absolutely the best thing ever. My mother used it for several years, especially after she could no longer drive. And I would go off on vacation. I knew that she could get the, the bus. They would pick her up, take her to the senior center. She'd get food or, you know, and socialization, socialization, while mainly she worked in the kitchen. And, but it was like a freedom for me and a freedom for her. But without the paratransit, there'd be a lot of extremely isolated people in Anacortes. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smart, for sharing that with us. That's really good for us to know.
I want to do kind of a plug for us. So as you guys probably know, or hopefully know, we receive CCA money, Climate Commitment Act money. That money allows us to provide free transit for youth up to 18. The, another point for you is that we, we do offer, we have a travel trainer that for anybody that wants to learn how to, to use our system, I would be more than happy, we would be more than happy to connect any, anybody with that resource. Completely free, yes, thank you. Absolutely, yeah, please do. We would love that, yes.
That's a great idea.
We'll make sure you get a card before we leave today.
That's a great idea. And is it true, Ms. Stidham, also that the 18 and under travel-free applies to the Washington State ferries also, most municipalities?
Yes.
And that was passed by our state legislature maybe last year?
It went into effect July 1st, but yes, it's for all transportation systems. So what, that's one of the requirements, we have to provide free transit for youth up to age 18. That's my understanding, that's ferries as well?
It is.
Cheryl, yeah.
And that's, that's statewide. And that, again, is from funding from the Climate Commitment Act. And when we talk about parking and we talk about driving and miles on the road and gas and the expenses of cars, it's another thing to, to think about, to have this kind of option. Would anyone else from the audience like to make a comment or have a question? No, anyone online? Let's see, anyone? Anyone from, oh, there is someone. Oh, great, okay, let's see. Oh, good, Mr. Orsini, you can unmute yourself and you have three minutes for a public comment. Just state your name and where you live, please.
Yes, my name is Steve Orsini. I live at 4971 Gwemas Island Road. That's an Anacortes address, but it is on Gwemas where I've lived for a long time. And we are very excited about this outreach, new outreach from Skagit Transit because for a number of years, we have been trying to get permanent bus service on Gwemas. We have a form of that when the ferry goes out on scheduled outages. Skagit Transit has put a small van-type vehicle on the island, and you could call them in advance and get a scheduled pickup at your house and take them to the Gwemas side of the ferry. If we can put that into effect full-time and have it meet up with the 409 bus with a slight rearrangement of schedule, it would really mean that many people that live on the island can access, you know, Anacortes is where we shop. It's where we do 90% of everything from healthcare to childcare to work. And having the ability to take a bus on the Gwemas side and then connect with a bus in the Anacortes side, and then if you're clever, you can get clear to Seattle from that. But it is, I think, a very important step forward. And if you think about the ferry systems statewide, the concept that we're going to continue to move more cars to these islands and build bigger and bigger ferries to do that is obviously coming to an end. It's coming to an end financially, but it's also, it, it is counter to everything we're trying to do in terms of reducing pollution, in terms of reducing one car, one driver. And so we're really encouraged... And so we're really encouraged about this. I can tell you that on Gwimus, we're wildly excited about it. We also see that it would reduce the parking constrictions that are, that are imminent for us in Anacortes, on the Anacortes side for the Gwimus ferry. So lots of good things to say about this, and I hope that the Anacortes City Council and the town can support expansion of these services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orsini. Counsel?
I'm there.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so we have another online person who'd like to comment. First initial C, last name Camp. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yep.
Oh, great. Hi, my name is Cindy Camp and I'm a part-time resident on Gwimus Island. And I really just wanted to say thank you to Crystal and to Cheryl for all these great presentations that they've been giving around the county and especially thank them for coming out to Gwimus Island. As Steve just talked about was, it was a great, it was a huge, important meeting for us to have, finally have some, a path forward possibly to having the connection with 409 meet with the ferry when it arrives. And I'm looking forward to that as a way to actually make that a connection that currently really isn't, it doesn't really work for most people. But also the other part of it, the piece of it was looking to the future of having microtransit or something on the island because that is also of concern. And we do recognize that this isn't something that isn't going to happen tomorrow or anything like that, but as, as it, again, this is something looking towards the future. We're kind of seeing that as, as a lot of opportunities. But at this point, it would be good to point out to the city council that currently there's a proposal for the ferry dock, a terminal plan, and some of the current proposals would limit the ability for the bus service to turn around and meet our goal of continuing, or of goal, our future goal, to have the bus to have the ability to turn around on the ferry landing so that people who may have some mobility issues wouldn't have to go up that huge hill to meet with the 409. So that's something that that will be coming your way at some point with the whole ferry terminal and hopefully that that's something that would be addressed so that that doesn't stop that progression. But, but really, my point on getting on this call today is to just to say thank you to Crystal and Cheryl and say what a great job they've done and it really raised awareness to people, especially on the island, to what the potential could be for future transportation in this area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Camp.
Can I point out that myself and Ms. Moulton have met with Captain Rachel and we have had preliminary discussions on making better connections with the ferry and the 409 to give the Gwimus Island folks a better connection when coming off of the ferry. We'll continue to have those discussions.
Yes, that's very exciting. And we also talked about the, the future development on this side and whether there's a toll booth or not that would obstruct the ability of a bus to turn around. So those conversations are happening and will continue to happen. So thank you for your comments.
Madam Mayor, I brought him.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you. I very much appreciate the presentation and the outreach effort that you're engaged in. I'm very interested in seeing the draft plan and sort of how you organize the objectives of the Skagit Transit system. Like what, what problem are you trying to solve and how are you trying to solve it? To me, it is kind of difficult to brainstorm that. I see some low-hanging fruit. Connection to the Gwimus ferry is something that I've been engaged in a conversation about since at least 2008 and well overdue. So I'm glad that there's apparently some engagement, additional engagement and recognition of that. Coordination with the state ferries, to the extent their schedules can be reasonably predicted, I think, is, is useful. Those two things strike me as low-hanging fruit. But when I worked in Mount Vernon as a prosecutor, sometimes at the courthouse, sometimes on Continental Place, I couldn't get between the two largest cities in Skagit County without taking, you know, two or more buses, one of which didn't belong to Skagit Transit. That route also involved hanging out in a dusty parking lot by the refineries for a little bit. There are things that we can do to improve that route, I'm sure, but if that's one of the primary objectives of the system. And I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what, what approach we're trying to take. It seems to me, from the perspective of Anacortes, as has been suggested, we have people that need to get from the Gwimus Ferry Terminal to downtown, from the west end to downtown, from all over to the senior center. And I sit on the board of the Senior Center Foundation and we've talked quite a bit about transportation being a limiting factor in people's participation in the senior center. So we definitely see that as a need. But also, we have people in town who would like to be able to make trips to Fred Meyer in Burlington. And there isn't a route that directly goes there. Should there be, is there enough demand? I don't know how you make those decisions, but I'm very interested in reading some of your findings and seeing some of your organizational structure in your draft plan so that then we can comment further on it. And maybe, you know, before even you get to a final draft, if you are able to check back in with us, I think we might be able to comment in a more intelligent fashion.
Absolutely. So we, we will be doing another round of community outreach in, I believe it's September. Cheryl? Yeah, September-ish, and welcome that feedback. So you ask what the goal is. The goal is to serve the needs of the community. So that's kind of what we're trying to do right now is gather the information from all of our stakeholders. When we met with the consultant originally, they asked if I wanted them to focus on existing customers or new customers? And I'm like, both. I want, I want to know where, where, what is the need in the community and how do we service, serve it? For a lot of different reasons, equity, mobility, green initiatives. There's so many goals that we're trying to accomplish in doing this. But again, our ridership is still down because we're not providing the service that people need. So the goal is to get the information from all the stakeholders within the community to find out what we can do better so that we can, you know, get more riders on our system.
Great. And so just briefly about micromobility, that's, would be an opportunity similar to Para Transit where a client could call and say, hey, I live in Skyline, I want to go to Watermark Book Company tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Can you come get me? Is that how that would?
So that's, that's kind of more like our Para Transit service. The, the, the micro, the microtransit service is more of an on-demand and it's.
At the moment.
Kind of like Uber with a bus.
Okay.
So I'm not familiar with the two areas that you mentioned, but microtransit is typically zone-based. So I know at the, one of the community outreach events that we did recently, someone asked if they could get, I think it was someone here in Anacortes actually asked if they could get a bus from here to Bellingham and we're like, no. It's not, a taxi service, it's a microtransit service. So microtransit typically works, so you have a zone and any, riders can go anywhere within that zone. But our, our real goal is to have it be feed or service into our fixed route system. So it could service both. I, I definitely can see there being a need in Anacortes for it. If the consultant comes back and says that there's a need, that's something we can definitely put on our, in our TDP.
Great. So just for the public, again, go to, what's the website?
So we, skagittransit.com or we have, for the folks that are here, we have the flyers in the back of the room with the QR codes. They go onto our website. It's the first page that they can access the survey, so.
Okay, great.
Please, please provide your input. We're, we're spending a lot of money on this, on this survey, so we, we want to get community input.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. First, I just wanted to quickly comment on all the public engagement. I've always felt that the best way to get results that the most people are happy with is to really go out there, engage, then come up with a plan, and then execute that plan. So I appreciate the willingness also to be open to new approaches, like with the microtransit. You know, I think that's, sounds great. I remember, and Councilman Walters and Cleon McGrath might remember this also, when the SCAP buses first started here in Anacortes, and it was a very exciting time. I was thrilled to be able to go somewhere where I didn't have to take, ask my mom to give me a ride. It was a big deal for me as a youth. And to Ms. Smart's point, I really do hope that that outreach to a generation that seems very open to doing things new, you know, for so long, it's been, we all need our cars, we all need our cars. But I think we're seeing now everything from housing, like with, with younger folks willing to trick out their vans to live in, in different places. And, you know, you're seeing the youth being willing to look at new ways or old ways, if you will, of doing things. And so I cannot stress enough how important I think that outreach is to the youth, who I think would be then hopefully long-term, long-term users. I just also had a question too. I never hear anything about any major issues or, or crime or anything that happens on the Skagit system. So I'm just curious, safety-wise, it seems like a pretty safe way to travel. I don't know if, do you have any information about that?
That's a great question. We're somewhat shielded from what's happening north and south of us. We don't have a lot of crime on our buses. We do have three security supervisors on staff as well as security at Skagit Station. So we have, we have had a couple of drug issues, fentanyl too, since I've been here, but it's been at Skagit Station, not on the buses. Our security officers respond very quickly to issues on the bus, just like the rest of the community. We're dealing with drug issues, mental health issues, homelessness issues. But our security officers are all former police officers and they have really good relationships with the officers in this community. And fortunately, because of that, we get very expedient responses when we call when we do have a real issue. But, but I would say for the most part, especially compared to what's happening all around us, our system is very, very safe.
Okay. And my, my, I also just very much appreciate all the comments on the Gwimus kind of expansion. I mean, I think that with all the difficulties that we've heard about with the ferry system, while this isn't a silver bullet nor is, I think, anything to fix the, the ferry transit issues, I think that this, definitely expanding that service would definitely help to get more people and reduce pollution, that type of thing. And then also, you had one slide up there that talked about a timeline for a plan. So this is really your fact-finding and talking to the community, and then you're going to develop a plan. And when about will that plan be ready or presented?
So we're doing the second, what do you call it, second set, second round, if you will, of community outreach in September-ish.
Ms. Willis, I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone? Sorry.
So October, September, October for the second round of outreach and then to have a plan together towards the end of the year, first of next year.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your presentation.
But, but again, as you mentioned, it's all about collaboration and that's why we're out here, communicate, collaborate, and problem solve together. That's what I always say. So we're, we're here trying to solve some of the same issues. I, I don't know if, if anyone knows this, but I also sit on the Housing Authority Board for Skagit County and I'm also part of the Northwest, help me out, Ms. Moulton, NorthStar, thank you, NorthStar. So I, again, we're all dealing with housing, we're all dealing with the same issues and transit can play a huge part of that and we want to grow with this community. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next on the agenda is a presentation from Parks and Recreation Director John Lunsford about the state of the department and it'll be fun-filled, I'm sure.
I've chose some spring colors for you. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, council members, ladies and gentlemen. So this is our Parks and Recreation update for the spring. Start with our Senior Activity Center. So at the center, you can see they're having a holiday party here. Center is back up to levels that were pre-COVID, over 165 visitors a day. Mr. Wolfswinkle is very happy because his new program manager, Amanda Miller, started last Monday. So he's very happy. He's been carrying the load with his volunteers and other folks up there for the past three months after Lee DeVere retired. So Carl's very happy. We're starting to do more evidence-based programming, compassionate care for caregivers, of course, the Aging Mastery Programs, and it's third or fourth year, and looking at other evidence-based programs like that to bring services to people who need them and to offer the regular programs that we do, such as you can see here, like the ukulele class or art classes, language classes, healthcare classes, so folks can take advantage of those. So we're glad to have Ms. Miller joining us as a full-time staff member. That's new to us this year. And the Senior Center is looking at working with the foundation on potentially some strategic planning so that we could do that together. That'd be something we'd be bringing to the future. That's still in the, very much in the discussion stage, but that's what we're looking at doing potentially later in the year. Okay, this is a fun slide. It moves. So this is the Egg Dash. You ready? 5,000 eggs, those are tiny white dots and the children, you see Mayor Miller kind of in the middle. He's going to start waving his hands, counting down, and go, there they go. So this is one of about seven to 10 events that we do throughout the year. I've lost you all, it's fine, I'll just keep talking. And so this is an event where the community's welcome to come. It's free and we do this one, we do a daddy-daughter dance, we do the, we've done the open, the fishing derby. We do the Kids' Best Fest, we do Bark in the Park, we do the Haunted Forest, we do the Wonderland Walk, things like that are our events in addition to the sports leagues that we run, from basketball to volleyball to youth soccer, flag football. We partner with our friends in the high school. They teach camps on different sports that they're doing. We do art classes. So Mr. South is very happy. He's our recreation manager today. His new employee started. So for four months, Dustin's been carrying the burden of keeping things going seamlessly. So thank you, Dustin, for that. But Eli Moore, a local high school graduate, has joined us as our new recreation coordinator just today. So we welcome Eli to the fold and thanks, Dustin, for keeping us going the past four months. And, you know, our programs are priced for folks to make them affordable. We depend on volunteer coaches to coach the youth and keep things going. Our soccer program in the fall has over 600 kids involved. So it's one of the biggest programs on the island. We're excited that we're able to offer that. We expand into, we've expanded our summer camps to try to have them throughout the summer. So our problem was in the past that we just didn't have enough capacity to have all the youth that wanted to attend. So a couple of years ago, we made the change and hired a summer coordinator to help us with that. So things like that, trying to be innovative, to keep youth involved, partner with other programs and make recreation available to all. Washington Park, not as fun as the Egg Dash. It's our new restroom. Important, not as exciting, but thank you to LTAC and to the Parks Foundation for helping us to fund that. That's our Sunset Beach restroom. It helps us for folks at the picnic shelters and at the playgrounds so families don't have to cross a road if they need to use the restroom if they're there. Also for some of our seniors or others who have mobility issues, this is an accessible restroom for them. The thing on the right looks kind of like a robot is our new pay station. We had to upgrade our pay stations. This is a new one in our B lot area for overnight parking for single vehicles where folks may be going to the islands or something like that with a boat that's meeting them there. So Grand View Cemetery. So if you've noticed recently, the orange house or office in the middle is gone. The, it had no foundation, had lots of rot. So replacing it with a smaller shed-like office that we'll be bringing in in the next six weeks. And that will hold our irrigation controls for that area and allow us, our staff to meet with families out of the weather. So it helps us keep our records there for families to meet with us and, and before they go out on the lawn, if they're looking for a service or asking questions about a loved one. So that change will be happening in the next six weeks. Forestlands. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for talking about the meeting with ecology earlier today. So the comment period is still open if you have comments on that. And that's just for the agreed order. It's kind of the agreement between ecology and the city and how we're going to then do our methodology, how we're going to look at the remedial investigation. So the science we're going to collect. So that's the next stage. This is just the agreed order stage, then there'll be the remedial investigation stage. So folks will have a chance to comment throughout and we would like to do that, or like them to do that. And that will be done through the Department of Ecology. If you have questions and contacts, you can always reach out to our office. If you have questions and contacts, you can always reach out to our office, we'll put you in touch with Department of Ecology staff that can take your comments. So the issues around this forestlands I wanted to bring up just briefly. Little Cranberry Lake, we had a meeting at the Forest Board, a lot of questions about what we're going to do at Little Cranberry Lake. Our goal there is just to improve the shoreline, because we're seeing a lot of issues around the dam, where we're having erosion issues. We also want to improve mobility access. So looking at those two things together, we were looking at ways that we can get people to the water and to allow them to have better access to launch their kayaks and to restore the shoreline, to do that together. That is not something we've put forward in a plan yet. We don't have the drawings that would put together in a plan, that would need to go for a substantial shoreline development permit. So if we do that, people would have the chance to comment through our permitting process. If need be, we could come back to council and discuss it as well, so we're open to discussing it once we have a plan. Finding an engineer to help us develop something in this small, specific area has been a bit of a challenge. We're on our third engineer, so, and it's good for them, they're busy with other projects that are much larger than this one, so that's what, kind of what we're running into for that project. But again, it's trying to work together with Conservation and Access for Recreation, as spelled out in the Shoreline Master Program, and our other programs with the city, and people will have a chance to comment once we bring a program to the permit stage. The next issue is our ACFL plan. People are making comments, we're grateful for that. That plan is in its draft stage, so when that plan comes back out for public comment, folks will have another chance to take a stab at it. Ultimately, it will work its way to you for adoption, as past ACFL plans have done. So you can't make a comment now because we've taken your comments, we're writing the draft. When that draft comes out, you'll, the public will have another chance to make, to read that and make more comments throughout the process until it comes to you.
Mr. Lunsford?
Yes.
Just a quick question about the comments. I understand there have been quite a few.
Yeah.
And will that be presented in a kind of a matrix sort of format? Because that will be coming to council with the plan eventually?
So those comments are in a matrix.
Okay.
I think there's been some confusion. So the comments made about the plan are in that matrix.
Okay.
Other comments that come to the board after the deadline closed, we'll still take them and pass them on to the board, but the comment period has closed, so we'll just have to wait until the next comment period if they don't see what they said in the plan. So at some point, we just have to close it to comments so we can write the draft, and that's the point we're in right now.
Okay, so ongoing.
But there'll be other opportunities for folks to comment before it gets to you, and you can also run your own process for that and instruct staff how you'd like to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
If you'll permit an interruption in your flow here, which I think was going pretty well.
Well, thank you.
With respect to the ACFL plan, are you expecting to include any kind of wildfire prevention or mitigation strategies or plan within the ACFL plan?
So, Mr. Walters, are you thinking like a firewise kind of thing? Or tell me more about what you're thinking.
Not firewise, as I understand it is more oriented.
Around homes, yeah.
Right, to development that occurs outside the ACFL.
Right.
What I'm asking about is, sorry, what I'm asking about is how we might manage the ACFL or manage things that happen outside the ACFL, not development, but preparation for the eventuality of some kind of significant fire event.
Right, right. So in, I know that you all see quite a bit of things, in the last Conservation Easement Program language we brought to you with the land trust, we talked about the idea of if there were situations that we had to do prescribed burns, for example, that is one form of fire management, that the land trust would not be opposed to that kind of land management in areas with conservation easements. Now, that's a very loaded term, you know, prescribed burns. People think of that as something that's more done on the east side and wildland areas, and we haven't considered that as something we wanted to do either. But in the future, if there was such a thing, we wanted to eliminate that hurdle with the land trust. Now, that doesn't mean it wouldn't come to you all or your successors on the council and work with our fire chief to do that kind of thing, but we are thinking about creative ways to deal with fire in the future. Our fires here typically are low to the ground, slow-burning fires that typically creep along the ground, find roots, and flare out. It's not the kind of fire that you see on the east side where it goes from tree to tree to tree and jumps crown to crown. We don't typically see that fire here in our forest. With the climate warming, that's something you could see, so we want to try to adjust our perspective. So I think your comments are that we would work with Chief Harris and have done so to bring in DNR elements for firefighting. I think the community should be aware that we have insurance with the DNR, an agreement that they come in to fight the fires after one hour, so they bring all the resources to bear. And we pay, I want to say it's the last bill I saw, it's in the range of $1,500 a year, and that covers every, all of their crews and their helicopters and things like that. So Little Cranberry Fire, all the elements that fought that fire for us, that was about $1,200 to $1,500 that the taxpayers here paid through the Fire Department funds. That's just, it's what insurance does, right? Some years you use it, some years you don't. So Chief Harris has also been busy buying rigs and training his staff to deal with fire preparedness in the fire. So that's the kind of on-the-ground stuff we've been doing, Mr. Walters. If you have, like, policy issues in mind that you'd like to think about, please suggest them to us, we'd be glad to look at something like that.
And specifically, my question is, will the plan include a recitation of these thoughts that you have had, the plans that you have put into motion, the resources that we've lined up? Will it include that work so that we can read it as policymakers and determine whether we think we have done sufficient planning?
Yes, yes, it will.
Okay. I think that that is an essential component, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Mr. McDoogal.
Mr. Walters brings up a good point, and it reminded me, actually, do we have any current data on the ACFL as a carbon sink? And if not, certainly something we can take offline, or is that something that could be incorporated in the future plan?
So let me have, so Mr. Voges is in the back room, he's working with the Friends and Transition Fidalgo on a bunch of different science projects and also a canopy evaluation. So let me talk to him offline and then provide you all with the answer based on that answer.
Fantastic, thanks.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. And the last piece is the Whistle Lake Dam. So this is an actual photo of the Whistle Lake Dam from the backside. If you didn't know it, it's a, it is a stone dam with earth and several tons of earth and trees in front of it. So what we're doing there is, Mr. Voges is working with the Office of Dam Safety, that is through the Department of Ecology, to work, to hire a consultant that will help us look at things like hydrology and the, essentially the loading of the, of the water and how we're going to create our spillway or manage our spillway to deal with that, and then how we are working to potentially put a backup dam behind that as one option, you know, so that if that dam were to fail, there'd be a significant dam behind it. So that's all, as you, if you've ever been out there, you can only really access it by foot or bicycle currently, so there's a lot of permitting that would be involved to create this backup dam once we have the data to protect the downstream residents. So it's a, it's very much in its beginning stages to collect, to hire the consultants to collect the data to make an informed plan. That will come back to you, so just want the public to know that. Okay. And of course, Arts Commission. So the Arts Commission is busy, they're going to bring back piano quartists this summer. Yeah, I know, right, very exciting. That's where artists, well, people donate pianos, there's a lot of pianos people want to get rid of for some reason. And then artists will decorate them, working with our friends at the Arts Festival, so it's a nice collaboration. And then if they're sold, that money goes to the school district's art, music programs, choir and band. So that was something that Mr. Simmison, if you remember Ian Simmison, the former band director, unfortunately passed away too early, helped create, and so this program lives on now, thanks to the Arts Commission. Also, you'll see the new Maggiore Grove statues be going out this spring, so that, that's coming back too after COVID, positive COVID. And you see the art here in City Hall, part of their 98221 gallery. So they're very busy working on other programs, we're collaborating with Mr. South to look at ways we could do more arts, working at the senior center to collaborate between young and old, working with the library. We have this working program called Paint Your Grandma, where you bring your grandmother or grandparent or guardian, and you do portraits of one another, and we'll give prizes to all. It's just a fun way to collaborate with the generations to have some fun art. So if you want to paint your grandma or have your grandma paint you, please stay in touch. This is the Skate Park. This is early on in the Skate Park, hats off to our engineering team. Mr. Voges was the project manager, Mr. Simms at Engineering was the project manager for Public Works. We're grateful for that collaboration and the donors that made this happen. Many thanks to Rachel Monteen at the Trinity Skate for helping to raise $1.15 million in private gifts. That's a huge shot in the arm to allow something like this to happen. And thanks to the Fidalgo Trail Riders for helping to design the pump track feature. So it's open, it's lit, meaning not only is it lit, it's exciting, but it's well-lighted, and you can go and enjoy it until 10:00 PM. Thompson Trail, we talked about this when you accepted the contract for Hanson, so that project is ongoing now, thanks to support from Samish. We are hoping to have data by the end of the year, based on the research they're going to be doing. We'll keep the public informed when we have to do some minor closures, because they'll be boring and do some drilling operation in the Cosby to find out what's there. That's part of the fact-finding. Thanks to Samish Indian Nation for not only their funding support, but for their donation of the Cultural Resource Survey, that allows us to do this in a proper fashion. Ship Harbor. So this is where the trail was, this is now an estuarine wetland where the salt and the fresh now mix, very exciting, it's a great, you know, that's what we want. We want nature to evolve and to happen, so we're going to have to find a way to get across that. The reason we need to do that, we believe, is because you have a million visitors coming to the parking lot just in the foreground of this photo. So we feel the need to kind of help them get to where they need to be. So we'll be going out to contractors to help us design a, a bridge, if you will. We're going to look at it in two phases, one to repair what was damaged, and then another possible phase to connect to the ferry terminal, to kind of bring people all in at the same time. We're working with our friends at the Port of Anacortes, we appreciate that. Mr. Kevin Anderson's been a good partner with us on that, as have the Samish, because this has some serious cultural resource issues there that we want to take care of, so Samish has been involved throughout. But we will bring back probably a contract for a consultant with you in the future to get this design going and to make sure we do the many necessary permits and design that this place deserves. Thank you, Ms. Cleo McGrath, for mentioning the Alter Americas Park, that's something we're going to start this, later this summer, early fall, notifying families, just, it's, we're going to spruce it up. Things aren't relatively going to, aren't going to change too much, but you'll see it will slightly expand its permit, its area going east, but in line with what the port has in mind for their event center and road redesignation. So we're, we acknowledge that here, we're just trying to clean this up, make it look good, and make it tie in well with what's going on down at the port area. Storvik Small Courts, the area marked in yellow, we've had a public meeting, asking the public to chime in on what they'd like to see there. If you've been there, it's a sad, sad section of the park, and we have desires. Some people would like to see sand volleyball courts, some would like to see zip lines, some would like to see gardens, some would like to see nothing. So we are taking those comments and meeting with the public to find out what's going on. That's something we expect to start, hopefully, doing at the end of this year. My little niece and nephew are excited because they like large digging machines and dump trucks, and they're excited to see that in that neighborhood.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
With respect to the Storvik Small Courts, some of us have already heard about a desire to not have certain types of racket-based activities.
Oh, pickleball, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right. We've heard those, too. Yeah, so we are looking for a spot in town that we can have pickleball that's not right next to homes.
Glad to hear, we are on the same page.
Yeah, there's a strong desire for pickleball. We hear that desire, it's just location. So we need to find a location that can accommodate pickleball for the many users that want to play outdoors, and we need to do that it's not next to people's homes, because that's a challenge currently for us. So we hear the desire and the complaints, and so we're trying to find that balance. Thank you. Cap Center Lookout, that's the one we talked about a couple weeks ago with the LTAC funding for Rotary, thank you. So now we're just finalizing their permit process. Once that goes through its, the normal appeal process, then we would be coming back for a sealed bid through the city. Even the money would be donated to the city, it would be our Public Works bidding process, and then a contract that you all would then review for the successful bidder. And I don't have a timeline, because sometimes those things take a little while. We don't know if someone may appeal it or what happens, and then, but if they don't, then that would be in short order, we would get that process going. Mount Erie Cell Tower lease. So that lease has expired, it's on a month-to-month with Patriot Sound Energy, and the legal department has been a great help to us to get that going. You, we have an MOA with the Kwanines because they have an interest in that land, as they donated it to the city for recreation. And so we are working on that, and that would be something that you'll be seeing in the near future as, after we present it, the draft to PSC. So it's happening. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer those, but it's moving, moving down the line, those things are complicated and take time. School inter-local agreement. So we have an agreement with the school district, the Anacortes School District, to use one another's facilities at no cost. We've had this on and off for years. So it was off after the Great Recession, when the school district ran into some financial problems. And then it was in 2016, it was back on, and now they're running into financial problems again. So they've asked us to look at this in a way that we would, the nice thing for us is we still use their facilities, we get priority for those, our programs, but there's going to be a cost attributed to it, as there was for a period after the Great Recession. So we understand that, so that will be coming to you again. We assume it will be in the range of about $7,000 a quarter. In the past, it was a, Mr. South, was it about four, six? It was $6,000 a quarter, now it's going to go to about $7,000 a quarter. So that's what we expect, we're waiting to hear from them, that will come to you in the near future. I just wanted to let you know that, so it wasn't a surprise. We understand that they're just trying to make ends meet, they're not trying to make money off of it, they're just trying to pay for their staff to be there to do the extra janitorial, to close the, to close the facilities and do what they need to do. So we understand that, that cost, we understand that they're a little, their, their budget is hampered, so that will be coming to you in the near future. West End Park, there's been a lot of discussion about that. So we, park staff, this is a, this is at West Sixth and Minnesota, this was a former detention pond. It was surplus because they changed some of the draining patterns, that's what a park person would say, the draining patterns that eliminated the need for this. So we looked at this corner lot as a great spot for a park, because it has more options there in the neighborhood for parking and access, et cetera. It's, we try not to have too many neighbors in parks, even if it's a nice park, we try to limit that. So we identified the West End Park that we would like to build at West Sixth. You all are in discussions about West Fifth, West Fifth property. I sent you a memo on that, discussing the idea of dedicating this through ordinance for parks purposes at West Sixth and Minnesota, and using REIT funding to help us offset losses that would happen if we sold the West Fifth property on the open market. We also could use that for matching grants. The challenge for grants with this parcel, this park neighborhood is, we don't score well on the state RCOs, because this is a wealthier neighborhood. Storvik scores better because of the neighborhoods there, or there's more low-income neighborhoods there. We do score well on needs and use, et cetera, but there's a statewide scoring pattern now that the RCO has started, that looks at financial health of the neighborhood. And so those neighbors, those parks, those communities with lower park numbers and lower income tend to score a little bit better. That's, you know, that's fine, that's great. We are wealthy in parks here, we have a rich donor base that we can, that will support us when we want to build parks, we're very fortunate in that regard. So we support communities getting parks, ultimately, that's good for us, if every community has a park and people use the parks in their community and no one park is overwhelmed, or no one community is overwhelmed by having a lot of parks and green space, as we do. So this is something to discuss in the future, we'll probably come back to you specifically to talk about this, but not tonight. Depot Pavilion and South Plaza. So we are looking at going to the county to talk about essentially making the plaza with the brick and the pavers and utilities and ground happen to the south as well. So the area you see on the left is the, the ground that, where we just took up the railroad ties, right? Took out all the creosote, that's great. And then on the right, you can kind of see a rough area where that is hatched. So that also does not interfere with the port's aligned or desired road realignment, pardon me, nor the Alter Americas expansion. So we're looking at this as a possible way to allow the market to expand, where people are not out on the streets if they want utilities, because they can't do that. The market's getting crowded, which is fantastic for the market, we appreciate that they're growing and we support their growth. And this would also allow us to do some things with groups like Race Week that are coming, that would like a place to put a tent that then doesn't conflict with the market, or if the port is looking for places to have some, not the port, C-. Or if the port is looking for places to have some, not the port, excuse me, the chambers looking for places to have some festival or events, this is a nice place for a tent with access to everything but sewer. You could have water, electric there. So this is a concept that we'd like to look at. We'd like to look at grant funding and planning for that. So that's, that's something we're looking at, potentially with .09 grants, the county Future projects, these are out a couple years, just so that your people can be aware of them. Grants for Storvik Field Updates. The field is over 50 years old, drainage issues, lighting issues, things like that. We want to address. Heart Lake Plan, a lot of people have come to you, it's issues, you know, how to then build out the Heart Lake parking lot, to reduce the amount of gravel, to do some shoreline restoration. We have a whole master plan that we talked about ADA access, moving the boat launch, getting the drainage back into swales instead of right into the lake. So many issues there for the health of the lake and greater access. So that's the Heart Lake Plan. It's not a this-year thing. And then Volunteer Park, we have a generous donor that's looking at turfing the last field, that could be used for soccer, lacrosse, and baseball. So that's something we're looking at. They may ask us to meet them halfway, but they've, in the past, it's the Daniels family that has generally donated over time to that whole complex. And that's the end of my colorful slide presentation. If you don't have questions, I understand it's late.
Thank you, Mr. Lunsford. That was fun filled. That was super informative. I'll go to the audience first to see if anyone there has questions or comments on what they've heard or what they'd like to know. Anyone know? Okay, seeing none, look online and see if anyone there. It looks like it's just us.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. It was very nice to get a broad tour of some of my favorite places in, in Anacortes. I have a few questions, just on a few of the items you presented. First, I wanted to compliment you and the Parks Team on the Washington Park, a successful Washington Park bathroom installation. I don't know if you know much about the constituents that live out in, in my ward, but we are not shy, and I got not a single complaint or not a single comment, just people that were all very pleased with the way that turned out. So, you know, thank you very much for, for that. I do get a lot of questions on the Cranberry Lake Mobility Access Plan as far as kayaks. And we don't have to get into this tonight, because I know this is something down, down the road, but a couple of things that have come up that I had questions about, as well as some constituents, were, one, how many other lakes in our area have mobility access enhancements?
None of our lakes do.
None of our lakes, okay.
Well, so in the ACFL Plan, their, Little Cranberry is called out specifically for improving ADA access. So in the past, we have built a lookout there on the, just around the corner from the dam, so folks could get out of their car, and this is something we did with Barrier Busters, which was a group, some of you may remember, that worked on mobility issues in the city years ago. Kurt Kennedy was a big proponent of that, if you know Kurt. And so they could get out of their car by themselves or with their helper, and get to a spot that wasn't a parking lot, to enjoy the lake, just as folks who don't have mobility issues could do. So Little Cranberry was designated as a spot to do that. This idea is just a continuation of that in the ACFL Plan, to help folks with mobility issues. You could do that, I would see you could do that at Heart and Little Cranberry, because they have parking lots right there.
Sure.
You know, and so that, that's what we're doing, according to the plan and according to our past practices and because of their, you know, the density around that lake.
So one of the, in regards to that, one of the things that, that comes up, and I'm not a scientist or a water specialist, so please enlighten me if this is not correct, but we've had a lot of, or we've had increased bacteria issues at Cranberry Lake over the past 10, 15 years. Say that's probably fair. If we, and one of my concerns is in increasing, encouraging people to bring their kayaks in. I mean, I don't necessarily wash my kayak off every time I get out of a saltwater lake before I go into a freshwater lake, so I didn't know if there were any plans for any of that kind of mitigation. And also, I just, I'm curious, I think Heart Lake is an, is an ideal spot, very open, very, very big. I'm just, I'm a little hesitant with Cranberry, only because it is kind of a more calmer, it's a very, for lack of a better term, special vibe in that lake. And I'm all for ADA access and appreciate the, the inclusion of the lookout. I think that's great. It was one of the big reasons that I voted for the Rotary Park and was a huge proponent of that, because I appreciate the ADA access. I just wonder if that's the, the best spot for it. But that's a conversation for another day. As far as the West Sixth Park, idea of the West End Park. So I very much appreciate your push to get that, for lack of a better term, to, to make sure that becomes a park. So we don't end up with, you know, saying to everybody that we're going to make this a park in order to replace what's happening at West Fifth, and then it changing into something else like more housing. So I very much appreciate that. To that point, I've heard from a few neighbors in that area who are very supportive, some immediate neighbors, actually, right there that border, that are very supportive of that becoming a park for the, the kids in the neighborhood and would like to be involved in some kind of comment process. Again, they're for the park, they just want to be involved in that, so hopefully that would be part of that process.
Sure, right. So just like, thank you, Mr. Fantini. So just like at Storvik Park, we had a neighborhood meeting to bring people in and say, what are you looking for? So some people said, we love pickleball. Some people say, we hate pickleball. You know, we want pump track, you know, all, all kinds of things happen. That's what those meetings are for. Then you take that down and kind of see what can fit, right? And then you go back and have another meeting, and then talk about hire a consultant, and then draw the plans, and then you have, just involve the neighborhood in that process. That's similar to what we did at Tersi Park, when that was built back in '06, '07. So that's, that's how, that's how we tend to do that, just involve the neighbors and have that conversation with them. So that's, that would be what we would do in this case as well.
Excellent. And then just my last two things, and sorry, I wait till the end, because I just, it's just my, how I do it.
That's fine.
So I would love for the next time I come to your office to get some information on that park scoring process for how grants are given out.
Oh, sure. I can send that to council. That's a link with the Recreation Conservation Office. I can send you articles and links on that.
I think that'd be very helpful. And my last question, and this is a question that wasn't in there, but it came to mind. So the Dog Park, and I mean the Ace of Hearts Dog Park, not the, not the Mud Pond, but the Ace of Hearts, is that within parks' purview at all?
Yes.
Is that something that parks?
The Ace of Hearts Park and Ball, the Dog Park and the Ball Field and the Wetlands are, that's all parks and recreation, correct?
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lunsford. I think that Mr. Walters might have one thing to say or ask.
Two, two things.
Oh, two, okay.
Yeah, so first of all, on a number of these issues, the Rotary Overlook, the Marina that you want to put in on Little Cranberry. I think on both of those issues, there are, there are people up here, elected officials, who are interested in not just chasing public opinion, but leading public opinion. And I was highly skeptical of the Rotary viewpoint, especially based on some of the things that I had heard about it, but being brought into the loop on what the project actually was, helped convince me very quickly that that is actually quite a good project, and I'm happy to cheerlead for it, and, you know, now we are very close to fully funded and getting it done. Similarly, on the kayak launching spot on, on Little Cranberry, there are impacts to the lake that are caused by human activity on Little Cranberry. And they start with boom boxes and litter, and I'm not sure that silent kayaks or paddleboards ever factor into that calculus. But I do know that some of us would like to be engaged in that conversation, and it need not simply be parks left out there to defend these projects. There, there are real issues to discuss there, yes, but we can help, you know? So if you don't treat them simply as, well, yes, you know, you'll need a permit and you'll have to go after the permit. But, but also as an opportunity to engage the elected officials in, in that work, and to be cheerleaders for projects that we would like to be cheerleaders for. I think that we could, you know, get to a better outcome with the community faster, because you're having these conversations with the community, but also we are, and we can also get very much sideways with you if we're not looped in on it all. I definitely appreciate your presentation for that, for that point. And let the record reflect that I'm not telling you anything about what you should do. I am simply making a request for how I think we could be useful to the process as a whole for the city of getting some of these things done.
What I'm hearing is you want me to come here once a week?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So that was number one.
Great.
Number two is, I don't think that we should feel always 100% constrained by the grant opportunity that's out there. And for example, the Depot Plaza expansion, I understand that the county's .09 money might be really heavily targeted, especially based on new legislation toward housing, because of the depths of the housing crisis, and the county very much realizes that. So I don't know if that's going to be available for you for that project, but if it's a great project, we can fund it. We can figure out how to fund it, and again, you don't have to be out there alone trying to figure that out. So I would, I would, you know, look for that level of engagement. We, we can spend general fund money on things. We can prioritize REIT for things. There, there are ways that we can figure things out if they are important enough. So any grant money that you can find, of course, is appreciated, but also that level of engagement with us can, can help get these things done faster.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, I think that does it for questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Lunsford. Next on the agenda is a contract award for the wastewater treatment plant high-efficiency diffuser system, and Mr. Rayum is here to tell us all about it.
Nothing like going from parks to sewage in one switch, but good evening, mayors and council. I'm holding up the end of the meeting here. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem and council, mayor's not here. Before you, for consideration, is a contract with Ovivo USA in the amount of $270,934 to replace the aeration equipment in basin number two. There is a basin number one, the wastewater treatment plant. As discussed in some technical detail in the agenda memo, which, I'm going to work on the agenda memos, that was rather technical. The diffusers add oxygen to the basin we use for secondary treatment. So a lot of people are probably wondering, what does that mean? So just a real quick overview, there's a primary treatment involved with sewage treatment, there's basically screens. So anything bigger than the screen gets caught and removed from the, the process. The next is, oh, sorry, in addition to the screening, with also anything that floats, we skim off anything that sinks, sinks out. Secondary is the use of bugs to digest whatever is actually in the sewage after we remove everything that floats and sinks and gets stuck on a screen. And they like oxygen. So we feed, with these, this equipment feeds the bugs that basically eat everything that's in the wastewater to get as clean as we can. And then the last thing before we discharge the treated water to the Gwamas Channel, we disinfect it with bleach. So for the past 12 years, we have used the same diffuser in basin number one with great success. It's a very well-built diffuser. Adding additional diffuser to the, this basin now will allow us to reduce the nitrogen to the fullest extent possible of our plant. There was some permitting for wastewater treatment plants recently that said we really need to bring down the nitrogen in wastewater discharge. That has been waylaid into courts, but we're taking it, we're making moves now, basically, to get at the spirit of that regulation before it's actually required. So that is my presentation.
Thank you. I would also like to say I really appreciated the detailed level of the agenda bill. I felt like it gave me a good idea of what, what we were doing and why, so thank you for that very much. Council, any questions for Mr. Rayum?
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
There are a few things that get me as excited as wastewater treatment plant, high-efficiency diffuser systems. I move that we approve the contract award as presented.
I excitedly second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Fantini. Mr. Franciac, would you please take the role?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Ms. Cleo McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, I would like to thank everyone who attended tonight and hung in for the whole meeting.